I may, could we have Dick, you want to lead us off in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning, everybody. I want to apologize. We were just next door doing the Building Committee meeting and apparently that clock is a little bit slow because we walked in here. It was time for the meeting to start. We had about 10 minutes according to that clock, so obviously we're not correct. We do have documents available right over here in the black binder if you wish to go ahead and see exactly what we're seeing on our iPads. And please feel free to come and grab that if you wish to see exactly what we're looking at. And then what I'd like to do, if any of you have any listening challenges or you're hearing impaired, we do have some instrumentation to allow you to hear more effectively and if you do need that, just let us know. With that being said, I'd like to go to our routine business agenda. Item number one is to consider a motion to approve the agenda. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Thank you. There's a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item number two is approval of the county commission minutes from May 27, 2014.
Move approval. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item three are bills to be paid in the amount of $881,060.78.
Pay the bills.
There's a motion to pay the bills. Is there a second?
Second.
Second. Any, oh, yes, there's a comment.
Mr. Chairman, our bills today include $618,000 for debt service on some of our bonds and there's some other bills, but I, that's a significant one.
Thank you. There are no more reports for review this week. Oh, excuse me, what's that? Oh, yeah, we need a vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. I know we usually let Cindy read. It's just a bad habit I have of doing the agenda.
It's a good habit.
So, she's not objecting, so I'm going to go ahead and continue.
Excuse me, John, is, is, anybody from IT here? Oh, come here. I'm not getting this thing. Go ahead.
Okay, all right. Thanks, Trish. All right, so item number five are personnel actions. And Ms. Deaver, good morning.
Good morning. I have several things for you. The first is routine actions.
Okay.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve the routine actions?
So moved.
We have a motion and a second for Mr. Barth. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item B is to recognize significant employee anniversaries for June 2014. Ms. Deaver.
I'm pleased to let you know that we have several today. The Ballin people are celebrating five years of service. Kamal Yousaf, who's in Facilities, Daniel Finnegan, who's in Highway, Sarah Kirkfleet in the Public Defender's Office, and Darlene Johnson at the Auditor's Office. Celebrating 10 years of service is Michael Mattson in the Jail, and Mary Zieve in the Auditor's Office. Celebrating 15 years of service and with us today is Tricia McKee in the Register of Bees Office. So our congratulations goes out to her. And also with us today, two individuals who are celebrating 20 years of service. We have Richard Hensman from JDC and Lloyd Olson from Facilities. And finally, with 30 years of service, we have Kent Betris, who is also out at JDC. Did I miss anybody who's here other than those people? So, a lot of years of service here. Anyone want to say anything?
Yeah. Yeah, could you all stand up, please, to be recognized? Wonderful. Thank you very much.
Thank you. The next item I have for you is the volunteers for county departments in May of 2014. Another banner month, 234 volunteers in four areas of county helping us out. So our thanks go to them.
Wow. Item D is to consider a motion to approve the salary increase for Mark Krins, Assistant Director of Facilities, and that would be effective June 7, 2014.
This last item is a special request for an out-of-policy salary increase for Mark. The main purpose of this is to recognize the market for HVAC duties and responsibilities.
Thank you.
And Lloyd is here, if you have any questions on that adjustment.
Right. Are there any questions? Then the chair will entertain a motion.
Move to approve.
We have a motion and a second. Thank you, Dick. All right, so, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yep. Item number six is applications for abatement. We don't have any this morning. Item seven, notices and requests. We do have a notice from the South Dakota Department of Health of disinterment and reinternment permit issued for the remains of Beth Turveen. Next item is item eight, planning and zoning notices. We don't have any this morning. Item nine are petitions for compromise of lien. We don't have any liens to compromise this morning, but we do have an opportunity for public comment. Is there anybody here that would like to approach the commission on any non-agenda item for the purpose of discussing something that is a non-agenda item for the commission? Could you please state your name and address for the record, please, sir?
Mark Millage, 9100 Lakeside Drive, Sioux Falls. I debated whether to do this today, but after voting this morning, I decided I would. We moved into our current home in the middle of April and about a week later, sent in our change of address for voter registration, which you have to do outside the 15-day window. Last Tuesday, we received a postcard in the mail that said we were now confirming our address and saying that we were now voting at the Maricar Community Center and we were voting in District 9. However, when you look at the map, we're actually living in the middle of District 11. And so I brought this to the auditor's attention last week. He said he'd get right on it, called me back about 10 minutes later, left a message that he contacted the Secretary of State and their information's correct and I'm in District 9. I came back down at 3:00 that afternoon to meet with him and showed him a map with an X where my home is. He pulled out his precinct map and agreed with me that we should be in District 11, not in District 9. So, he, they promised they'd resolve it before the election today. I never heard another word. I voted today. I went to the precinct, Maricar Community Center, because they do have ballots for District 11 and District 9 there. They couldn't find me on the list. And I wasn't on the list, my wife wasn't on the list. And thank goodness, I mean, they're very good about it despite the fact they're working without air conditioning and the clock is shut off in there and not the best of conditions at the community center. But I had to fill out an emergency voting card. They called to confirm at the auditor's office that I am registered. Filled that out, voted. But I've worked in television news for 25 years and always enjoyed the election process. This is one of those years where I really questioned whether it was worth the effort to vote. But I thought I should report that. It's not about me, it's not about my wife, but this housing development's going to have 170 homes in it when it's built up eventually. And potentially, that's 170 people that are district wrong and could go through the same hassle. So, just wanted to get that on the record.
Mark, I want to thank you for coming in here and taking time out of your day to let us know that. We also were informed that the state sent out some cards indicating that a polling place was listed at a south address as opposed-
At the north address.
I'm sorry, north address, and it was actually at a south address. We've had, unfortunately, it's turning into a grave concern regarding the quality of the information that's being disseminated regarding polling places. We've been very vocal about it. It's been going on for about four months at this table. I know that there have been a lot of challenges, both at the state level and even at some of the local level. And when you go to vote, it should be the correct process at the time you enter into that voting center. And obviously, we need to take a good, hard look at correcting that. And I think that the state has some real challenges ahead of itself. I'm happy that you were able to at least come down here and point out on the map that clearly their information was incorrect, but I apologize for the lack of follow-through.
I appreciate that. It's kind of going back and forth as who's to blame. I'm not sure, but I just want to get fixed.
Well, I mean, obviously, you were given, was it a provisional ballot or you were able to vote?
I was able to vote today.
Okay.
I had to fill out the emergency voting card and to be entered in, but I was given a ballot. I did vote.
Well, it's interesting because even last night, I was at my son's baseball game and there were people walking up to me really confused about where they were supposed to vote. So we've really sent a mixed message. You know, if you hide people's cheese long enough, they're going to quit looking for the cheese. And I think people need to be able to go ahead and know where they're supposed to be voting. So, we've really confused the process. But I appreciate you taking time out of your day to come in here. Does my comments or questions give rise to anybody else?
Well, yeah. You said something about the conditions of miracle.
Yeah.
Was it electricity or what?
I was in there at 7:30 this morning. It's the community center at Hayward, Maricar Community Center. And there's no air conditioning in the gym and the power was off and the clocks were shut off. There were lights in there, but the clock was stuck at like 10 after 11. And those folks are going to be there all day today. It's, it was already stuffy at 7:30 this morning. I was, I came in, I was the sixth person going to vote. By the time I got everything figured out, I was the 11th person to vote, but.
And that's Kenny Anderson Elementary, right?
No, Hayward.
Okay, Hayward, okay.
If I may.
Question, Tom, go ahead.
I am astounded and honestly, I don't know what else we can do except listen because we don't run those elections. You know, we've, we've, we've had so many different little things go wrong. This, it's, it's all new. We've not had this many problems in the past. And, I mean, it virtually brings tears to my eyes to have it come back again today, Election Day. Thank you very much for coming forward.
Gerald, did you have a comment?
Well, I don't know what else to say that's not already been said. The issue is, is that I wish we had more control. And frankly, all we get to do is relay the information to the legislature and to the Secretary of State and to the county auditor and sometimes to the school district because those are the people that are responsible for the elections based on whatever election it is. And it's just very disappointing that we even have one problem because we've been at this for years and years and years and there should not be exceptions to those rules. So, thanks for your persistence.
Yep.
Thank you.
All right. Thanks, Mark. Is there any other opportunity? Yes, ma'am. Can you please come forward and state your address? Name and address, please.
I'm Connie Morgan and I live at 916 South Cranview Avenue. And I just want to comment on what he was saying. My district was chopped up and I was given no notice, none whatsoever. I am now in a totally different district. I was given, I was sent no information on that at all. I wasn't told where I should be voting. I mean, I know you can go to any of them now, but I was voting two blocks from where I live and now I have no idea where I'm supposed to be voting. So this is not just, this is not just isolated. This is all over the place. And I know you guys can't take direct action, but you need to be yelling at somebody.
Did you go downstairs to the auditor's office and ask them where your polling location is?
No, maybe I'll stop down there.
Yeah, they can give you that information downstairs.
But I think that information should be sent to us.
I agree.
We shouldn't have to go. I didn't, I didn't know it had been changed.
Right.
You know, how do you know to go ask when you don't even get told?
You know, what's interesting is that in the last election, the city and the school board election, they went to large voting centers and they tried to get the word out to everybody, but those traditional precinct locations were not going to be utilized. Well, some of them actually duplicated, but they had large voting centers and so we had some confusion from some of the voters there because they went to their precincts. Similarly, even in your particular circumstance, I know that they actually changed some of the polling locations recently. And your location, without knowing anything else, may have been one of them that was changed. I don't know if they did any notification other than what was put in the Argus Leader for official notice, but.
And I don't get the papers, so.
Not a lot of people do. And so, obviously, on the website, but I don't know if you have web access as well. But the end-all, be-all is that you probably unfortunately raise another interesting issue about getting that information out.
Yeah, it should be mailed out.
Yes. Yeah, thanks, Colleen, Connie, for coming in.
Ma'am.
Oh, just a second. Dick, Dick has a question for.
Were you under the impression you could vote at anywhere?
For today?
Yeah.
I didn't know what the deal was today. I had no idea.
Thank you, that's all.
Thank you. That's what we needed to hear because I think there is massive confusion out there. Thank you, Ms. Wogan. Anybody else? All right. So with that being said, that was the opportunity for public comment. I will turn to the regular business agenda. At 9:00 AM, we have item number 10 as a public hearing to consider approval of the malt beverage license renewal applications for establishments that had compliance violations in the past year. That would be Renner Corner, Brex Bar &amp; Grill, Friendly's, and Midway Service. And for those establishments that know compliance violations, we do have a briefing memo with the ones that actually did not have any violations. So Cindy, go ahead.
The auditor's office has published a public hearing notice for those four establishments that failed the alcohol compliance checks. And representatives from each establishment are present today to answer any questions the commission may have considering their renewal applications. And also Captain Niedringhaus is here from the Sheriff's Department to answer any questions you might have about those violations.
Thank you. So with that being said, we're going to go ahead and ask for the approval of the 2014-2015 malt beverage renewal applications. And I think we have a list. Do you want to go ahead and read what they are?
Certainly. The Alibi, Baltic Corner, Bottoms Up, Buffalo Trading Post, Crooks Conservation and Gun Club, Hunter's Point Shooting Club, Hewsett Speedway, I-90 Speedway, Northern Links Golf Course, Pump &amp; Pack, The Riviera by Rocco's, State Line Casino, Strawbale Winery, 38 Roadhouse, American Legion Post 307, Ultimate Golf, Uncle Ed's Specialty Meats, Sioux Empire Fair Association, Wild Lake Oil, Wild Water West Water Park, and Yogi Bear Camp Resorts. Those are the establishments that did not have violations. And there's no public hearing on that. We just need a commission action. The four that have the public hearing were, as you stated, Renner Corner, Brex Bar &amp; Grill, Friendly's, and Midway Service.
Thank you. We'll come back to that. So on the other locations, other than Brex, Friendly's, Midway, Renner, what I'd like to do is take all the other ones that were listed by Cindy. Is there a motion for approval?
It's my motion.
Thank you.
To approve.
Thank you.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to approve the locations that had no violations. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Now it's the time and place for us to take up the, I believe it was, the licensing of both Brex, Friendly's, Midway, and Renner Corner. Is there anybody here from Brex Bar &amp; Grill? Thank you. Can you please come forward and state your name?
Hi, I'm Marilyn Breck.
Thank you, Marilyn. And now you understand that there was obviously a failure when it came to purchasing alcohol by a minor at, at your business location. So I think this is a time and place for a public hearing. So I'm going to ask the commission if they have any questions of Ms. Breck to go ahead and ask those questions at this time. Go ahead, Jeff.
Have you had problems before?
I just bought the business on the 1st of October. And, no, I haven't. We did get another sting and it was the same employee and we passed it the second time. But.
That's encouraging.
Yes.
Commissioner Kelly, you had a question?
Was there any suspension for a week or anything? What happened?
He's been on probation and I have recently hired a bar manager and we're restructuring our staff and sending them all to the training and getting everybody that's, whether they're bartenders, servers, cooks, they're all going to take the classes.
My question was, was there any penalty for serving underage?
For the bartender?
Did you, were you suspended from business for a week?
Oh, me? The bar?
Yeah.
No. No, I had to pay a fine. I had to pay the fine.
How much?
A thousand dollars.
Any other questions? Thank you, Ms. Breck. Now, this is a public hearing. Is there anybody here that wishes to object to the issuing of the licensure to Brex Bar &amp; Grill? Now is the time and place to state your objection on the record. All right, seeing none, go ahead.
I'm wondering if we hear from the Sheriff's Department at the beginning or the end in reference to any of these conversations, if the captain would like to make any comments?
Yeah, if Captain Niedringhaus wants to. Please come forward, Captain.
Good morning, Commissioners, calling the House Captain, you know, I think we come in about once a year to do this. And I think just a quick history, we do, we try to do a compliance check twice for every, every establishment in Miniat County that's outside the city of Sioux Falls that are responsible for within a year timeframe. So what you're seeing here are four establishments that had a violation when we did this compliance check. And just a reminder, we use an 18-year-old individual to go into these establishments in an attempt to buy. We not have them lie. It's to test the establishment to make sure that they are complying with the laws. And what I can say is, for the most part, it's usually an error by the clerk and the establishments have been very upfront with us and have worked with us. And we remind them about the training and the issues and the importance of the checks applied to the clerk. So, that's just a quick history. If they have any specific questions, I'd be more than happy to answer them.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, go ahead.
Are we going to do these one at a time or?
One at a time.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you, Captain.
Paul, what's the process then? Do you issue a citation at that point?
Yes, a citation is issued to that clerk. And then that information, we take the information and forward any violations to the state's Department of Revenue. And it's my understanding that, I believe that there's two violations. There's a monetary fine and then the third, there's a possibility of a suspension of that license. So.
Where does the fine go, do you know?
To the owner.
No, where does it, does the state issue the fine?
I imagine that goes to the State Department of Revenue.
I think most of it is dedicated to education.
And what did they spend on?
Clothes, I hope, and teacher pay. So, any other questions?
Thank you.
Thanks, Captain. So, when it comes to Brex Bar &amp; Grill, I guess the chair will entertain a motion if there is one.
Move for approval.
Second. There's a motion and a second for approval. Any further discussion?
Mr. Chair.
Oh, just a moment. State's attorney.
And just to clarify, what you're voting on here is a recommendation to renew or revoke the power rests with the Secretary of Revenue and peer ultimately.
That's correct.
But just want to clarify what you're voting on.
Right. So we have a motion to approve the recommendation to the Secretary of Revenue and we have a comment from Commissioner Kelly.
Well, there's, there's a couple of things. One, I mean, obviously, the money for the sting is our, is our cost. The money goes to the state for the fine. There's, and we cannot control whether or not, it just is, all we can do is issue a recommendation. However, you know, I'm not saying we do it in this point, but, but it is a possibility that we can also defer action on this until the first meeting in July, which in effect gives them about a one-week suspension. We used it in the city before and I just, I offer that for what it's worth. I, it's, it's unfortunate, but I think the thousand-dollar fine is significant and I'm going to support the motion to renew it. But, but I think we need to look at other options sometimes, too.
Thank you, Commissioner Kelly. So with that being said, oh, Jeff, yep.
I just want to comment that having the bar since October is not that long.
Thank you. So with that being said, I guess we'll go to a voice vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. So, next we're going to do Friendly's. Is there anybody here from Friendly's that can appear? Can you please state your name and address for the record, please?
Whitney Baker.
Okay.
Do you want my personal address or the store's?
Store's fine.
47155, 250th Street, Baltic, South Dakota.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Ms. Baker this morning from the commission? All right, then, Mr. Chair. Yes, go ahead. I'm sorry. Go ahead, Gerald.
He has tunnel vision this morning.
Yeah.
Can you just give us a history of what happened in this? Was this your first offense?
It was. We opened in January this year and the clerk did sell to the minor and she has since been let go for that reason. That is our policy. And I have also trained all of the employees now in the TAM training. Every one of our staff has had that training at this point.
Thank you. Are there any other questions for Ms. Baker?
You had not participated in the training program prior to this?
I had, but my, the entirety of my staff had not.
How long have you owned the bar?
It is a convenience store and we opened January 27 of this year.
Mr. Chairman, I'll move approval.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second for approval, but I guess Captain Niedringhaus, did you have any further information you'd like to share? Okay, thank you. So, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Ms. Baker. Next is Midway Services and that is obviously, yes, come forward. Could you please state your name and address for the record, please?
My name is Jim Ballin. My address, 24858 478th Avenue, Garrettson, South Dakota.
Thank you.
I am one of the owners.
Thank you. So are there any questions for Mr. Ballin? Can you please describe what happened?
We hired, we've hired college gals to run a convenience store and this lady was probably one of the youngest ones. And she is very timid and I think was maybe a little intimidated, but yet she knew she had to card people and she didn't. We had her on film and she did not do this. So we were, you know, we, we got to steam. That's what we ended up with. We have now implicated the program for the state for all of our convenience store operators. We have also moved our ID calendar right in front of the till. And we also took our till and any cigarettes and alcohol or beer that is sold comes up ID.
All right. Are there any questions for Mr. Ballin?
Did you pay the thousand-dollar fine also?
Yes, we did. Yes, we did.
Captain Niedringhaus, do you have anything you wanted to add on that? Nope. Jeff, you had a question?
Is this the first time you've had this?
This is the first time, yeah. And the place has been in operation since 1922.
Are you the original owner?
No, I'm not. No, I'm not. Yeah, I'm not.
Jeff is the original customer, though.
Probably, yeah. Well, I've been there.
I was underage then.
I've been there 50 years, May 16th, so.
Thank you. And the state's attorney reminded me, this is a public hearing, so we have to have any opponents, anybody objecting to the issuance, come forward. Is there anybody here that wants to object? All right, well then, seeing none, I guess the chair will entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve.
There's a motion.
Second.
And a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Ballin. Next we have Renner Corner. Is there anybody here from Renner? Yeah, thank you. Please come forward. State your name and address, please.
I'm Dean Sorum. I have the Renner Corner, 47510, 47525, 475. Okay. I'm not used to saying that.
Rolls off the tongue.
We've had the corner for about 47 years.
Wow.
And this particular case that happened to us, the gal, she was a middle-aged gal and we hired her. And we had her for about 10, 12, 14 days maybe. And she didn't even, the guy, gal came in, we weren't there. In a way, they came in and we got stumped. She didn't even ask for a driver's license or anything. So we fired her the same day, but it just happened. What do you do?
Yep. Well, Dick, you had a question?
What kind of training did you put her through before you put, I assume that's a C-store, right? Or is it a bar?
It's not it.
It's a convenience store.
It's a C-store and she hadn't had the training because she had only been there like a week or so, so I haven't gotten that done yet.
Have you changed that policy? Is, do they understand the importance of it coming in now?
They all, yeah, they've all taken the test. We always have them take the test. That particular lady hadn't taken the test yet, so.
Thank you. Ma'am, what was your name again?
Sandy.
Sandy.
Sandy Sorum. And the address for the Renner Corner is 25797, 475.
Thank you, Ms. Sorum. Any other questions for the Sorums? Yeah, Jeff?
Dean, I know that a few years back that you put in one of those card readers.
Oh, yes, I still have that. It works good.
But you have to use it, though, right?
Yeah, it's up here. People use it.
Yeah.
It's a definite thing. I mean, if they're not old enough, there's a big red X right there. So simple. But there again, you know, it's kind of hard for her and I to be there 24-hour days, too.
Yeah, we know. Well, thank you very much for coming this morning. Is there a motion? Or, excuse me, are there any objections? Anybody objecting to this particular issue? No? No objections? Is there a motion?
I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman.
You shaking your head? No.
Oh, okay, I couldn't see him.
Yep.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve.
Thank you. We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
A comment?
Yes, send a comment.
You know, I know that you guys had some issues years ago, and I know that you took it pretty darn seriously, getting that card reader in there and stuff, and obviously, with new employees, there's going to be issues. And, you know, when I was younger, obviously, I would try to maybe get something when I was too young. Now that I'm old, it's my job to make sure that people don't get it, and so let's not let those kids get it, because we had two young people just last year that died when a forty-two-year-old fellow bought the booze, and we just can't be having it. It's too tragic, so thank you for your efforts, but let's be tough.
Thank you. So, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thanks, folks. All right, next, we're going to turn to item number eleven, which is, thanks, Captain. Next is item number eleven. We have a public hearing to consider the request to vacate that portion of Rudolph Avenue, beginning at the southeast edge of Ashton Street and extending south to its end at the east edge of Melissa Street and lying adjacent to Lot Six, Block Two, Benson Second Edition of the northeast quarter of Lot Six, Block Three, Benson Second Edition, the northeast quarter, all in Section thirteen, Track one oh two, North Range fifty, west Minnehaha County. Mr. Anderson, good morning.
Thank you. Scott Anderson, representing Minnehaha County Planning and Zoning. Today is the public hearing, which has been advertised to vacate a portion of Rudolph Avenue, and this is located at the Crook's Exit, the southwest quadrant, and I have a PowerPoint presentation. I'll bring it up. I'll just speak slowly till then. But the applicant brought this in. I'll give you a little bit of a brief history. Rudolph Avenue has never been constructed. It is located at the end of Ashton Street, and it runs along the applicant's property and, which is J T R T Properties LLC or Hyman Fire Apparatus, and they are desiring to do a major expansion on their building, and with the narrowness of the lot and the location of the right-of-way, it precludes them from constructing the size of building that they really would like. So, they have requested a petition to vacate, and I will show you here on the screen, the, this is the portion of Rudolph Avenue that is to be vacated, and I have some pictures as well. It's located at the end of Ashton Street. Ashton Street is basically constructed at this point. From this point onward, the applicant has a parking lot in here, which is paved, and you'll see that this is not constructed. Furthermore, Cottonwood is, ends at this point, and this street, which is Melissa, is also not constructed. We published hearing notice for the meeting today, and furthermore, I sent a notice of hearing to the two adjacent property owners, which was this property owner here and the Bensons, which own all of this property. So, we did notify the adjacent property owners of today's public hearing, and so this, I'd be glad to answer any questions, but let me show you the pictures first. This is basically the location of the right-of-way, which has never been constructed. You can see the building that they used to build the fire apparatus, and this is looking sort of southeast towards the interstate, which would be the location of the road. Once again, this just shows you that there, it's just a farm field. There's no road that's been constructed. This is, this is at the end of Ashton Street. You can see the concrete ends here. This, their parking lot is over here. This is the short section of Ashton Street. You sort of can see the, over here is the right-of-way for Cottonwood, which eventually may be extended. It's my understanding that the property owners eventually will be looking at sort of redeveloping this whole area, and there's probably a replating that will occur of the, of Cottonwood and Melissa to better utilize this area. The proposed location of Cottonwood is in sort of a low area, and there's been some discussion about changing all this around. But this does show the general area, and once again, this just shows the area which would, in which the road would have been constructed. It shows the road is not there, and there is no property that needs to be accessed through Rudolph Avenue. I'd be glad to answer any questions that you have. I know the applicants here, they, if you have any questions for them as well.
Okay, first, let's go ahead and ask Scott. Are there any questions for Mr. Anderson this morning? Seeing none, I guess I'm going to turn to the applicant. If you want to come forward, please. And Mr. Van Busker, we know each other. How are you doing?
Good morning.
Yeah, please state your name and address for the record, please.
Sure. Steve Van Busker, fifty-eight hundred South Remington Place, Sioux Falls, South Dakota. Scott did a good job summarizing everything. A couple things I might want to offer, really, this is all driven from an operational, like the business operations. We looked at a lot of different possibilities as far as how to expand the business and make it work, but it's basically, it comes down to how the parts are going to flow through the manufacturing facility. So, we had to locate the building in a certain way, which the road got in, got in the, in the way. So, Ron Hyman is here as well. You can have him speak if you'd like, but he does own that centerpiece of property, so he owns on both sides of that street, and we did contact Derry Benson, who's the other owner who the Hymans purchased the property from originally, and discuss it with them. He didn't have any issues, but they did get a notice in the mail, it sounded like, as well. So, other than that, I didn't hear anything. I'd just take questions.
Thank you, Steve. Are there any questions for Steve this morning?
How big is that parcel just west of the one we want to vacate, roughly?
I'm trying to remember.
Four, five, three acres, four acres?
I think it's probably, just guessing, it's probably about four.
Okay.
Because I bet you those, the smaller ones up there are one-acre parcels, that's about, right? Yeah, so maybe in the neighborhood of four acres has been a bit.
Thank you. Any other questions for Mr. Van Busker? Before we do our upgrades for something. All right. Any other questions? All right, seeing none, then, those were the proponents. Are there any opponents? People that want the avenues to continue and not be vacated? Anyone? All right, seeing none, I'm going to turn it back over to the commission. What's your pleasure?
Move for approval.
Second. We have a motion and a second for approval. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
Mr. Chair, I have a question for Scott before.
Yes, sir. Yeah, go ahead. Scott?
Scott, do you happen to know, does this commercial subdivision have a road district?
I know the area on the north side of, the Cottonwood Avenue on the north side of two fifty-eighth does. I don't know about.
The roads look pretty good.
The roads are, these roads are concrete, so they're, they're, they're very well-constructed roads. I don't know, Mr. Hyman may know. Is there a road district there for the maintenance of Cottonwood and?
There is. Thank you.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you for flipping that over, Trish. All right, so, thank you, and you guys, obviously, we took our vote, didn't we? Yep, you guys are all okay. So, item number twelve, authorize the application for the Juvenile Accountability Block Grant, funding in the amount of forty thousand six hundred and ten dollars for Lutheran Social Services Middle School Diversion Officer Program, and is, anybody here to speak? Ms. Oldencamp, please, come forward. Can you please state your name and address for the record, ma'am?
Betty Oldencamp, CEO, Lutheran Social Services, seven oh five East Forty-first Street, Sioux Falls.
Thank you, and is there any, are there any questions for Ms. Oldencamp this morning? Go ahead, Jeff?
So, how would this, this person assist, I guess, on, in the program here? How would this grant, which allows you to hire somebody, what does this person do?
The grant is for the position of Middle School Diversion Officer. That is a existing program that has been funded by this grant. I believe we're in year three. This would fund year four. The staff person takes referrals from the state's attorney's office for youth that are, you know, not, they're not attending school, and then we do work with the youth and the family during the school year. We also operate during the summer. It's a cooperative effort with Axtel Park and Whittier Middle Schools.
Thank you. Any other questions? Dick?
Are these in the, these are in the rural school districts?
Sioux Falls School District, Whittier and Axtel Park Middle Schools are the two.
There's also a School Resource Officer in there, right?
Yes, there is.
Does this work in conjunction with, or how is it?
There is a cooperative effort there. The, I would say the School Resource Officer's responsibilities are probably broader than what the diversion officer is. The diversion officer's tasks are pretty specific to those referrals that come just from the state's attorney's office, so there's been some involvement at that level, and the intent is that we can keep them from going deeper into the juvenile justice system, hopefully get them back on track and attending school. Just past year, outcome year-to-date, out of the thirty-six youth that we have served, only seventy-nine percent have had no reoffense, so eleven percent have reoffended, but ninety-seven percent have improved their school attendance.
Wow, super.
Which is, truancy is what it's, what is targeted for, so.
Ms. Oldencamp, thank you very much for giving us that number, because frequently we request and we receive grants to help us with a lot of our projects. We rarely, if ever, get those kind of percentages, but we hear about what the result is. So, thank you very much for providing that. Questions? Jeff?
I'm just excited about it, and I'm going to authorize or make a motion to authorize this application.
Thank you. We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Ms. Oldencamp. Item thirteen is to authorize the chairman to sign an agreement with the Associated Consulting Engineers to prefer bid specifications and related documents for the public safety building H V A C project. Mr. Olson, oh, you're not, Mr. Olson.
Morning. Commissioner Mark Krins, Assistant Director of Facilities. The twenty-fourteen capital improvement contains fifty-five thousand to do some H V A C work in the public safety building. I contacted Associated Consulting Engineering for a proposal to design, provide drawings, collect bills, and handle construction admin, which will cost seventy-five hundred for their fees, and we recommend accepting this proposal to move forward.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Mr. Krins this morning?
Move approval.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thanks, Mark.
Thanks.
Item fourteen is a briefing from the Sioux Falls Health Department on the grant application by the city of Sioux Falls to the South Dakota Department of Health for mosquito control activities. Good morning, Ms. Patton.
Good morning, and thank you.
Can you please state your name and address for the record?
Yes, Denise Patton at nine hundred West Cherokee Street. As it mentions here, about a month ago, we were made aware of federal grant funds for the state of South Dakota for West Nile virus prevention and surveillance, and that was in place several years ago. Several of you remember that?
Yeah.
And then it kind of disappeared, in which, during that timeframe, a lot of the programs that had started up kind of dwindled away, and I think the state is really trying to put forth additional resources and effort across the state to get people to continue to support West Nile virus control, being we are number one or two for the last decade as highest hit for West Nile virus. It's endemic. It's always going to be a problem here in South Dakota, and Minnehaha and Lincoln, of course, carry a third of the state's population, so we're always under the radar. They're always looking at us for kind of that first step and that sort of thing. The grant is looking at, well, the grant has offered five hundred thousand dollars for the entire state, and they're looking at everybody's applications separately, of course, with additional funding consideration for surveillance efforts. So, with that being said, we're looking to kind of enhance what Sioux Falls is already doing into the two-mile perimeter, a lot like we used to do.
Right.
And when we do spread out into Minnehaha and Lincoln County, that additional two miles, we're, in essence, doubling the size of our program, but what we're hoping to do and apply for, again, we're going to apply for the money. We're going to put forth the work and effort and all of that for you, I guess, in essence. Not asking for anything from the county, just to let you know that that is our plan. We hope to put about eight traps into that perimeter in some of our most populated areas. Ellis, Pinalik Hills has quite a population, Rowena, Renner, they're kind of right on the edge there. We really want to monitor mosquito activity out there to make sure we're doing what we need to if risk is high, and doing some larva sighting. We're not going to spray like we did before to the adult sighting. It's a little more difficult out in agricultural areas to be effective with that, but certainly treatment of water and monitoring what's out there is super important. So, our hope is to get an application to the state by, it's due to Nate, on behalf of Lincoln and Minnehaha County, to just kind of expand our control efforts.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Ms. Patton? Yeah, go ahead.
Well, maybe I missed something, but is this a mosquito control issue, or is it just a research issue?
Oh, it's a mosquito control issue.
So, and it's within the two-mile surround?
Right. Well, I know that you didn't all get this, but this is just a beautiful map of the two-mile perimeter, and we're just hoping to put traps in several locations kind of surrounding to just see what's going on out there and try to keep mosquito and health risks low in that area.
But you don't do any spraying?
No. We do in the city of Sioux Falls. It's really, really expensive to spray, especially out there when you've got a field over here and a field over here, and it can just drift, and a lot of that's obviously private, but we would be treating ditches and large areas that are public that we can get to, and if we can communicate with some of the farmers and people out there, if there's an area that we're concerned about and we see it, we can hopefully work with them as well to kind of minimize mosquito issues.
Questions? Gerald, and then Jeff?
Denise, you know, if we cooperate, so to speak, with like Brandon and Del Rapid or do we actually compete with them to get the grant?
No, honestly, they, I sent a letter to every single town in Minnehaha, Baltic, Worthing, Humboldt, you know, or not Worthing, sorry, Humboldt, Hartford, Brandon, all of them, and I gave them information on what it would take for us to put a trap in their town, monitor the contents, I D. them, speciate them, and give them an idea of when they're hitting thresholds, so if, if we see high numbers that we think are of concern, we can call whoever their, their lead person is and let them know. Most of them are doing some sort of control. I know Brandon is. A couple of them have gotten back in contact with me to say, yes, we would like you to run a trap in our area and give us that data so that we can do something, and I've kind of helped them in applying for their own grants. That would be something that they could also add chemical or equipment to if they wanted additional things for their towns, and we're just kind of helping guide them with the surveillance end of things, because that requires a lot of man-hours that I know a lot of them don't have. So, they'll apply for their own. This two-mile perimeter, we thought we would take on ourselves.
Jeff?
Well, thank you for this. I think it's, it's obviously an issue that affects all of us. Recently, I noticed that while South Dakota is in a hotspot for West Nile, Florida is not, and, you know, you think a lot of mosquitoes would be down in Florida. I don't know what makes us such a busy location for this, but you guys also go after like stagnant water and put tablets or something in there, right, that prevent?
Larva sighting activities that we would be conducting out there, and what we do in Sioux Falls, too, is we're looking for standing water that's going to be there longer than a week, which is long enough for a mosquito to lay their eggs and begin proliferation, and we would use an appropriate product for that given area. Obviously, if you have a detention pond or something very, very large, you would use a longer-term treatment than if you've got something that's probably going to dry up in about a week or so, but there is a number of different, very biologically safe products and things that work just perfect for that, and that's what we would be looking for.
Is there anything that a person could put like guppies into their pond to keep mosquitoes from proliferating?
We actually do have a component of our program in Sioux Falls that we put fat-head minnows into certain areas, for instance, like in the Y M C A camp in Sioux Falls, you know, they've got little cricks and things in there. To be careful, they don't dry up, because that's not so good, but, you know, they, they complement what we're doing, but they're really not, they certainly eat mosquito larvae, but not enough to keep that under control all the time. So, a lot of times, we'll use a bacterial larvicide, which is completely safe for fish to eat and birds to eat, and it doesn't hurt them at all, and, but it is very specific for mosquitoes. So, we'll put some bacteria in there, and also the fat-head minnows, and hopefully, between the two of them, they're doing a good job.
And what should citizens be doing? Spare tires, bird baths?
We send out letters to businesses that have tires as a very regular part of their business, and we get that that can happen, and ask them to rotate them, tarp them, keep them circulated, and certainly homeowners, property owners should do the same thing, or any other. or any other things that can kind of pool water, buckets and barrels and things like that. So we try to get enough education out to people, and every year, we strive to do more, dumping that stagnant water, encourage people to make sure that if they have ornamental ponds and bird baths, that they're circulated, if they can do that, but there are products just like the ones we use that you can get at any of the hardware places, you know, Lowe's, Home Depot, Landscape Gardens, you know, any of the greenhouses and things like that. They all have them, and super safe, and people can use them in their own properties.
Any other questions for Ms. Patton?
Thank you.
Thank you. So that was a briefing, so good luck in your endeavors.
Thank you.
Yep. Next, we have Minnehaha County Commissioner Liaison Reports. Any reports? All right, seeing none, let's turn to new businesses. Are there any new business? New business? Any old business? Jeff?
Let's vote.
Yep, remember, it's the day to vote. Hopefully, you'll find your location. Otherwise, call the auditor's office.
Our phones have been busy.
Yes, I would say call our auditor office. I don't know if they're giving a mixed message out of pure, call our office. Anyway, next, we do have an item for executive session. It would be personnel. The Chair will entertain a motion to adjourn into executive session.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you. For personnel, second, yes, personnel. Motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. All right.